All right, we're getting so poor we can't handle having gavel anymore. And this is the City of Clear Lake Shores, City Council Regular Meeting, July 5th, 2022, at 6:34. All members are present except for Alex Scanlon with excused absence for sickness. Uh, item number two, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Texas flag. Welcome, everybody. I will start with item number three, reports from council. Councilman Steve Wurdes.
I basically just wanted to give a big shout out to everybody for our fantastic Fourth of July celebration we had. I've lived here a long time. And I've... Each time I see a gathering like this, it reminds me just how special and what a wonderful neighborhood Clear Lake Shores is. And, uh, that's, that's all. It's just a... It's nice to see everybody come together and everybody chipped in to help. And, um, I think everybody had a wonderful time.
Thank you, Mr. Wurdes. And Councilman Rick Fisher?
Uh, nothing to report this time. Chris is here. She'll give us an update on, uh, Parks and Pool.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fisher, Councilwoman Monica Leday?
Uh, I want to echo... Wow. Echo literally. I'm gonna echo what, uh, Steve said. Uh, it was a great weekend, had a really good time, even though my skeletons were stolen out of my yard and abused. But I digress. Um, and then secondly, just wanted to invite everybody. We'll have a workshop for the short-term rentals on July 13th, and everybody's welcome to come.
Thank you, Ms. Leday. Uh, next is Councilman Randy Cronister.
Uh, nothing to report. Y'all lied about the West winning. The East took it.
So I get to go next, though. And, uh, officially, the West side, you know, won. But, uh, from whatever I saw, it was, uh, all good and play, and everybody did really well, and it's nice just to see everybody getting out there. And the, uh, the whole thing with going on at the picnic itself, uh, like Steve was saying, echo that same thing. A lot of folks volunteering, all coming together. It takes a whole team to put that whole event on. Uh, Civic Club did a really great job, Yacht Club coming out there and making sure all the kids have popsicles and some older adults had good beverages to drink. Um, so I really appreciate that. Uh, and then, uh, then the fireworks and everything with that, I think it went real well. It was, uh, a lot less than previous years from what I've heard at night, so, uh, Chief did a really good job of doing that. And, uh, all the people coming out and watched the fireworks. Uh, did have a discussion with, um, Chief Holland out at Kima. I know that Chief Keel's working this too. But with the whole thing that happened in Uvalde, in our school here, um, they're working together. Uh, Kima may have some funds that they're gonna help fund their department to, to take some, maybe some leadership roles. But I've asked Chief Keel to, to work with Chief Holland on that and definitely work with CCISD and, um, Galveston County Sheriff's Department. They have a plan. We need to be, you know, engaged in all that plan. And most likely, a lot of times, we'll be first responders for those things, so, uh, he's got that action and, and, uh, he's trained in that type of stuff. And, uh, they also got a knock box put on the school, so there was, uh, a few holes that they found, um, during some, uh, audits. And, uh, hopefully, we'll get them all up to speed and make sure our kids and our parents and all the teachers are protected. That's it. Uh, next is, uh, staff reports from the Police Department. Chief Keel.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel?
It's a little loud.
Uh, the Clear Lake Shores Police Department conducted, uh, in the month of June, AD traffic contacts. We made zero arrests for DWI. We made, uh, two narcotics offenses, responded to four disturbances, filed one charge of resisting arrest, uh, had one burglary of a motor vehicle. We had five theft calls, twelve arrests on warrant, six agency assists. Also conducted forty-two residential checks and four hundred and twelve business checks. Uh, touching on the, uh, the fireworks, uh... I didn't do anything on that other than put myself in a position to, uh, respond better when people complained about fireworks and to patrol and put the word out, the message out about fireworks not being legal. Um, I'll tell you that I worked, uh, July the fourth till about three o'clock in the morning. And I, I have to commend our, our city and our residents because everyone that I saw was in compliance. And we didn't have any complaints. We didn't have any... Uh, there was a couple of, uh, people that don't, don't really live here that didn't know about the ordinance. Uh, and, uh, appropriate action was taken. Um, the crowds that were overflowing from Kima, uh, Occupied Target and, uh, Home Depot parking lot, uh, Stewart Elementary, basically every free space of parking that they could find, uh, very well behaved. There was a lot of people, a lot of traffic congestion, but there was really not a problem. Um, and, uh, I just want to say thank you to our residents for following the ordinance and, and, uh, paying attention to the social media posts that we put out. Uh, it was very quiet. You could hear the fireworks, but they were coming from other places. Um, didn't have a lot of trash in the street from fireworks, didn't have a lot of, uh, damage or injuries from fireworks. And, uh, I just want to say thank you to this residents of Clear Lake Shores. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. Next is, uh, City Administrator Brent Spear.
Uh, good evening. Uh, you have my written report, but, uh, things that are of note. Uh, Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant, uh, currently permitting review is taking place. Uh, I did get an update today that our permit was federally complete as of June ninth. I had, had to look that up in Google. Still don't understand what that means. But, uh, in typical Army Corps fashion, the, and I quote, "Evaluation is ongoing and currently in good standing and is being processed as soon as possible with existing workload." So they can't guarantee a date, but we are moving forward. We've answered some questions, uh, provided some revisions to drawings, so that is moving forward. If you use the pool, trying, trying to steal a little bit of, uh, Ms. Richardson's thunder. Uh, the pool lights are now working, so thank you to a vendor getting us, uh, some reduced-capacity wattage bulbs. And, uh, had to trace some of that wiring, but it's up and running. Uh, State Road 146 continues, so if you travel Seabrook over the next few days, you might notice that at night, uh, they're closing down some roads to put some of the aerial components in. So, uh, if you have to drive at night through that area, you might, uh, avoid it. Positeno Six, uh, just thank you for approving the, moving forward with that plan. We are accessing police vehicles. Uh, we have two previously marked units and also have a seized, uh, I think it's a Sierra, not a Silverado, 2500. Uh, Chief is working to get those, uh, cleaned up. We'll get them, uh, placed on municipal bid. Uh, I'll also, um, make a posting with our social media so that anybody that lives here wants to be aware and follow that, they can. Uh, the hope is to take any funds with that and return it back to Capital Equipment, uh, Program Fund, and we'll talk about that later. Uh, Public Works did a good job setting up for July 4th and, uh, probably gonna leave the flags up for at least a day or two, um, maybe even to next Monday. So, uh, please don't give us a call to remind us, because we know they're out there. Um, as far as construction goes, with Blue Point, uh, repaving, anticipate that, uh, starting in, within the next couple of weeks. But I also have talked with, with the contractor, and I want to have a ten-day before-it-starts meeting with them on site. And I'll also include our, uh, inspector that the city's contracted with independently. And, uh, we will make notification of those that are on Blue Point. Um, and we apologize in advance for the inconvenience, but our, uh, our goal is to have a much better road for you and, and, uh, help improve your drainage. Uh, we're not changing the elevation of the road, but we will be putting some, uh, drop into it to get the water to flow to the sides where it needs to get out, so... And that goes to the north and then out, out into the channel. Uh, other items, the Ad-Hoc STR Committee is, um, very busy. And, um, as Councilwoman Leday said, there will be a, a workshop that they're participating in, which is a work session. But they'll also receive new information from anyone that would like to chime in, uh, with a new perspective. Uh, we're fully aware of the problems that are, that are popping up with the STRs and the inconveniences they bring with them, and we're trying to address that. Um, and part of that process, uh, once that committee is, uh, gone through there and made some recommendations, those will be sent to Legal for review because, uh, I already know that some of our suggestions are not, uh, not allowable under state law. So we're making some adjustments to those. And, uh, Legal also has another avenue that they're investigating. They'll get back to us. So hopefully, we can make some progress with that. And then, just in time for storm season, City Hall is at the tail end of, of a power loop. So it goes all the way down into the neighborhood, comes back, and there's one pole at the end, and that's for City Hall and the resident there. So, uh, we were able to contact Center Point, and we'll be getting, uh, a new power drop with a new transformer and, and new poles coming from these high lines here. They'll cut across, uh, and, and land at City Hall first. So the house next to City Hall will also have, hopefully, improved power reliability. So instead of being the last one fixed in a storm or on that loop when it comes in, hopefully, we don't lose it with the, with the high-power lines. So, uh, that's a big deal for us. And, uh, the rest of it, I think we're gonna, we're gonna cover, working on, on budget, so that, uh, that's difficult. And one thing that, uh, Chief Keel did not mention, I thought was pretty important, was, uh, June 23rd's Pizza with Police. And I don't know if anyone in here, it's just maybe a few of us participated in that, but, um, I thought it was, uh, probably attended by somewhere between fifty and sixty people, is a guess. But, uh, it was an opportunity to meet the police officers, to sit down casually and have Chief answer a lot of questions and talk about fireworks, which he said he didn't do too much, but he did talk about that. And, uh, I thought it was well-received and, and, uh, the pizza was good from Island Pizza, so... Are there any questions from council? That's him? Sorry to talk so long.
Thanks, Mr. Spear. Next is, uh, item five, committee reports, Parks and Pool. I don't know if Chief, if you can get that microphone on or...
Well, it's been a few weeks since we've had, uh, our, our meeting in, uh, June. No major issues with any of the parks. Uh, some of the plants were dying up at the pool and found a broken sprinkler, so Jorge fixed that. And a few minor things, some boards at a gazebo up there at, uh, Deep Hole. Um, mostly discussed issues with, uh, with our pool as far as, uh, security, um, people trying to get in the pool. Um, concrete was gonna be filled in at the bottom of that gate where they put rocks to block, plaque out the, or block the magnet there. And Brent, I don't think that's been done yet, but... Um, about adding the concrete in there, so that's one thing, um, that would maybe cut down. It's easier to have that filled in than keep pulling out the rocks that people put in there to block the magnet so they can get in the gate. Um, issues, um, with the guards not checking, uh, people in very well, not checking tags. Um, um, real issues of, um, guards just being on their phones all the time, not paying attention to the pool. We had one, uh, member, um, um, post that a guard actually had a, um, um, uh, earbud in his ear while he was on the guard stand, uh, not paying much attention. They're on their phones all the time. So we tried to address that. I've addressed it with Brent. He tried to address it with Christie, who handles the guards. Um, he, um, yes, the, the, uh, a guard, uh, yesterday said the, the lights were working, Brent, but they came on at seven, so I didn't know if you want to redo a timer for any particular times there. Pardon? Okay, that's great. Uh, I was real happy to, to hear that the lights are working. Um, also with a meeting, uh, been some issues with our ice cream social, that they, uh, complained that they can't pay with something other than a check. So it was brought up at our last meeting. Impossible, since it's hard to have, uh, electronic payments, maybe do some kind of a QR code next year? Come up where they could use these QR codes that are used everywhere, that maybe they could pay out there, uh, and make it a little easier. Um, let's see. We are, um, reinstating, uh, a policy that we used to have an effect about actually chaining up the, the gates at night, so it's not open twenty-four hours. And, uh, we thank the, the police for our support with that, because they, they did have to come over and, uh, help with that the other morning. So we appreciate that they'll lock it up and then reopen it, uh, in the morning. And it'll be according to the hours that are set in the pool rules. And I'm happy to report that we have a lifeguard that lives in Clear Lake Shores. He had worked just a couple of days, went on vacation with his family. He is now back. Uh, he's been assigned to our pool. Seems like a very responsible young gentleman. And, um, I think we'll do a great job at, uh, enforcing the pool rules a little better than some of our other guards have been doing. And, uh, I want to thank, um, Mike and Darlene Pettit. Mike is here tonight. Um, they made a wonderful contribution to our pool. They ordered protectors for the handrails with our heat. They've been getting very hot. And we've got several handrails at two different spots there, um, where the steps are. And they ordered, uh, handrails. They came, they put them on, um, it was a couple of days ago anyway, when I was there, and they're great. And we, uh, just can't thank them enough for the great things that our members do do. And I think I covered about everything. Thanks. And thanks to Kay and the police. I really appreciate their help, and we needed it a couple of times.
Thanks, Chris, and thanks, Mike, for the covers on the handrails job. Burnt your hand, did you?
No, I'm, uh, pretty thinking about how to get them on the heat, have a roll or, uh, fiber map that sits, uh, around the bachelor itself.
Yep.
Work really well.
Good. All right, next is, uh, roads and drainage. All right, zoning board of adjustments. And planning and zoning, waterfront compliance. Everybody's dragging a little bit here. All right, we'll move right along to item six, Civic Club Activity Report. Ms. South.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. Uh, I'm here to report we are tired. It was a busy weekend. I want to thank everyone, uh, Chief Keel, Brent, everyone that was out there, the mayor, everyone that was out there helping Steve set up. Uh, we had so many volunteers that helped us this year, which we really needed. It made things so much more efficient. We had a big turnout. I think it's the most. We served over two hundred and forty plates on Saturday, which is a lot. So, um, and I'm not, I don't have the reports on our membership, but our membership is still open. And you can go to our website, and we now have it electronically where you can renew your membership. Uh, we have the after, uh, the back-to-school party coming up in August for the kids. Uh, the Civic Club has also voted and approved to purchase the new blinds for, for the clubhouse. Uh, and so I'll be working with Brent to get that taken care of. We appreciate everybody's support, and we hope that everyone had a great time this weekend.
Awesome, thanks. And thanks for getting the blinds in here. That's really great. All right, next is, uh, item seven, Sixtieth Anniversary Celebration Committee. Up again.
Yes. Uh, nothing really new to report, other than, uh, we have started, uh, our raffle for the year of a $2,500 gift card, which the drawing will be at the gala on December eighth. We also have a QR code available. It's on the website to reserve your, uh, tickets, which are on... We will be distributing the tickets later, but you can reserve it now and get your place.
Awesome, thank you. You're not up again? No, just kidding. All right, item eight, uh, EDC, Johnny Boltinghouse.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I'm not gonna make any Water Wars comments. A lot of you guys were at the, uh, Joint Strategic Plan Workshop. I think that went really well. It's always good for City, City Council and the staff in EDC to get together and, um, aside from the strategic plan, just the team building and kind of share and converse about stuff, uh, I thought that was really good. Uh, I was involved in the one in 2019, and this was more of an update. And it's, uh, I think it should be said how much we actually got accomplished. You don't necessarily stop and think about that stuff, but a lot of stuff was on the list we got accomplished, so it was nice. Uh, right after that strategic workshop, uh, two other EDC members and I, along with, uh, Teresa, went to the State of the Bay for the, uh, Visitors Bureau, the Visit Bay Area Houston Visitors, Visitors Bureau. And that went really well, and I think it was good for them to see, uh, exactly what that is and what's going on. Uh, we're gonna stay in touch, Teresa and I, and probably one other member with them, continuously throughout the year. Uh, they want to come do an update and presentation to the EDC, maybe every six months, or just when we can make, uh, make it available. I was thinking maybe instead of EDC, we could do it, one, at one of the, uh, council, uh, meetings, keep it short, ten minutes, something like that, so everyone can kind of see exactly what the Visitors Bureau is doing that we signed up for. Uh, our regular scheduled EDC meeting is this coming Tuesday. There's a chance it may get tabled. There's a, a few of the board members going to be out. A lot of the stuff that we're involved with now is up in the air, so it may just be updates anyway. But, uh, our agenda is due this coming Friday, so we'll know in the next couple of days for sure. And we'll make sure that, uh, an email goes out in case we don't have it, so if you don't show up. But if there's anything important that needs to be on the agenda and we do need to have a meeting, just let me know. So I'll have...
Thank you, Jenny. All right, next is item nine, public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to City Council. Topic of discussion must be consistent with an item listed on the agenda in compliance with the Texas Open Means Act. City Council may not deliberate. Comments, uh, from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual. Any volunteers? Don't everybody jump at once. Come on, Alan. Alan says, "A good weekend." All right, having none, uh, we'll go move on to consent agenda. Is there any items A through E that, uh, council would like to poll? Having none is any objections to the consent agenda, items A through E. Having none, consent agenda is accepted. Item eleven, new business discuss, discussion and possible action may be taken on the following items. Item A, approval of $67,855 payment to Dana Safety Supply Incorporated for upfitting of five police department vehicles. Mr. Spear.
Always get to come and ask for money. Uh, trying to, this is, uh, this is the upfitting cost for the five new police vehicles that were approved. Uh, originally, just a little background, I recommended four police vehicles, but decision was made to go with five. We used in our calculation a number that was developed for upfitting from earlier research, and it was, uh, $12,000 per unit. So, um, of course, uh, like everything else, things go up, carrying costs go up, and, uh, electronics are especially volatile. But, uh, so five, five units at $12,000 each would be $60,000. One thing we didn't take into account was decommissioning, uh, other units, and we have three decommissions. And, uh, so they take the stuff out of those. And, uh, and then there's probably a little bit of an increase on parts that's in there. Typically, uh, wouldn't be probably in front of you for $66,000, but, uh, we exceeded that number. So, uh, that, that's the magic number, 67,855. As far as the vehicles go, I think everyone would agree that they look good. Uh, officers are, really enjoy them. They seem to be very functional. Uh, they're well-lit. They have some interesting, uh, capabilities that are helpful for the residential part of the city as far as, uh, patrolling. And we have had, as far as I know, just a couple of things that they are addressing in a timely manner. One is, uh, decals, uh, a little dissatisfied with the coloring of the, uh, the Shield decal. It has kind of an odd tone to it, so they're gonna be working on that. Uh, that's something they can do on site. And then we have one unit, and, uh, Chief might be able to elaborate, but had one unit that either had a weak battery or wasn't charging or had a dead short somewhere in it, and it would, it would drain off. And I, you know, we've had, we had to jump it first couple of days, so I don't know if it's in service now it's working or that was identified. But, uh, any problems that we've had, and they're not real big problems, they're right on top of it. So we're getting good service from them. So I would, uh, request a recommendation to, to go ahead, or recommend that we make that payment. Uh, with all the vehicles that we're accessing, the plan again is to take that money and return it to the Capital Equipment Program. So there will be recovery of some of these costs. I don't expect, uh, the three vehicles that I have left to, to net us $40,000, but, uh, we'll try to get as much as we can out of them. And then the plan would be to also access the, the equipment that's been removed from the other vehicles. So the light, the interior lights, uh, cord lengths and all that are all specific to that Tahoe-type vehicle, so large, you know, GM vehicle. So we've changed to a, to a mid-range Ford, and so if stuff doesn't fit, so that's why you have to buy new stuff. And, uh, we would anticipate probably making a single lot and selling, uh, the removed electronics, primarily light-bar switches, maybe a couple of Jato desks that don't convert over, that hold computers, and, uh, make one single lot, put a, put a reserve on it and sell it. And normally, that would be something you probably wouldn't get a much, much money from, but the aftermarket for officers that are using them for their side jobs and things with the Tahos that come out of, uh, come out of fleet is pretty high, especially down here, because everybody had, had Tahos. So I think we would, we'd look to make some money back on, on those items. They're useless to us now with our current vehicles.
Make a motion to approve the payment to Dana Safety.
That's second.
All right, motion by Mr. Cronister, second by Ms. Leday. Anything to discuss? I have, oh, sorry.
I have a question. So Brent, let me ask you, when did they finish the upfitting? How long has it been finished?
How long has it been finished for all the upfitting?
For all the vehicles. Like, when was this payment due?
Uh, it was, it was, I got it a month ago, so I don't know.
So, not to be getting on you, but as a contractor, we're holding $67,000 of these people's money when we approved all but $7,000. Why didn't we write them that check and bring this to us? Why didn't we write them that check and bring this to us for the difference?
I hadn't considered that, but I wanted it to be transparent and have the entire amount, so.
I get it, but we already approved that amount, we could go ahead and pay them. And maybe next time they don't squeeze us in and bid us in so fast because we're holding their payment for thirty days. We kinda had this same situation down on the dock. We held the money from Ed Berry for ninety thousand dollars at the end, but we had already approved an amount up to what the difference was. That may be why we have a hard time getting contractors to bid our work. I'm just saying, we already approved the amount, we could've written that check thirty days ago.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes with five in favor, one absent. Item eleven B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Bayou Animal Services Budget Increase. I think Councilman Monica Lade.
So, I probably dropped the gun, jumped the gun by putting this on the agenda, um, I had our, my first board meeting with the Bay Area Animal Services, or Bayou, sorry, Animal Services, and they never redid their budget, they stayed with the same budget for the past three years. So, needless to say, with, um, COVID, a lot of the temporary work that they had and also the, um, volunteer work and the donations that they had have taken a huge decline, and so they've operated the last two years at a severe deficit. Clear Lake Shores portion is only three percent of that, 'cause it's done, prorated based on the population, and, but we're gonna have a workshop here in a couple of weeks and kinda go through this a little bit better, um, so I'd rather table or put, or hold any kind of action until that workshop's done, but we're looking at about a sixteen thousand dollar increase to our budget for next year to make up for the deficit of the last two years, so just kinda something to put on the radar for our budget.
So, is your recommendation no action?
That is correct.
We can make a motion for that and then would just, you bring it back whenever you want.
I make a motion for no action.
Yes, sir.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Five in favor, one absent. Motion passes, and Item Twelve is adjournment at, uh, seven zero six. Thank y'all for coming out.